This conference will now be recorded.
If you bring drinks and snacks, you have to provide some for everybody.
I'll do my best.
There Jennifer.
Here she is. Hey Ginger.
Hi. Thanks for, hi. Thank you for the enlargement of the list.
Good.
Glad it worked.
I'm old, I can't read that little tiny print.
I don't know why it wants to send it, when I look at it on my computer Ginger, it's coming across as two pages, but then when I open up what I send you guys, it's all crammed into one page, so go figure, you know computers, they got minds of their own.
Yeah.
Are we ready to start?
We are.
Okay, this is Douglas Dunn, Chair of Planning and Zoning Commission, and this is the City of Bisbee Planning and Zoning Commission held January, or Thursday, August 20th at 5:30 PM. I'll call meeting to order, your roll call, John Ballas.
Here.
Nancy Pirana. She is not here. Douglas Dunn here, Jennifer Ryan.
Here.
Bryant Keefe.
Here.
Andy Housman.
Here.
Michael Metzer.
Here.
Louis Pollak is Counsel. Not here. And Joe Ward. All right, who said here?
You called my name, this is Lou Pollak.
Okay Lou, you're on, thank you.
And I'm here too Doug.
Joe Ward is here. First of all, I've called the public, does anyone want to speak on a subject other than an agenda item? If not, we'll move on then to Agenda Item 1 for discussion only, discussion of City Code 2.9.6 with the City Attorney providing counsel to the Commission.
I'm not seeing any attorney present.
No. He's not here, he's not on.
Nope.
So we move on then. Agenda Item 2 for discussion only, review of the Bisbee zoning code with regard to possibility, possibly amending Article 5.3.2B to include averbage used in Article 5.1 Bullet .5, this would permit rebuilding demolished or burnt buildings in the Bisbee Historic District on their original footprint, regardless of current setback requirements in Bisbee zoning code, the building code's fire resistant requirements for any given setback distance would still apply. Joe?
Yeah, I just wanted to work a little bit on this as far as, and I looked at the codes and figured out what, how I would recommend putting, putting it in there to where it would enable us to enable people to rebuild in some of these places where you can't meet those setback requirements, and that seems like the most reasonable way to do it. And I just thought I'd bounce it off you guys before, you know, till there's time to talk about it, or if there's going to be any problems with it before, before it comes to a public meeting. The official public meeting.
So you'd be making the two sections consistent.
Yes, to keep it consistent, so that the people in Old Bisbee have the same, have the same privilege that everybody else has in town.
Any comments from Commission members?
Well, I think it makes sense because if the footprint is there, sometimes it's very problematic to move that. So I think it's a good idea.
It maintains the integrity of what's there. If it's called a historic district, doesn't make sense to remake it. The buildings have a lot of character and personality because of the way they sit, and that should be maintained, that's what makes it kind of unique. Makes it interesting, so I think rebuilding in the old footprint is a great idea.
Also explain Joe, that the building code will provide protection to the joint properties, right, in terms of how close that they are to setbacks, used to be the prime way in which we provided, you know, fire resistance, and now we have building code to kind of compensate for that.
Yeah, that you're closer than five foot to a property line, you've got to have either build with fire resistant materials, or if it's, if it's wood, such as most of the structures are in Old Bisbee, it has, it would be required to have a one hour firewall on the outside and on the inside, so that, so that the house next door is protected from a fire on that house. And that house is also protected by that, that one hour fire separation on the outside from a fire at the neighbor's house. And then there's, there's issues with eaves, and the way fire starts in eaves a lot of times, so the, the building code has requirements that if you get closer than two foot, you can't have any eaves, if you're between five and two foot, then you have to have a one hour fire separation on the bottom of your eaves to protect from the heat that gets trapped there, and there's a lot of science in it, and it provides adequate protection.
Any questions of Joe, or any comments?
I had one. How long after a building is demolished or burnt can they use the same footprint?
Perpetuity.
So, I live in Old Bisbee, got a property here, the house burned down in 1912, and virtually occupied the whole lot, they'd be able to rebuild the whole lot again?
Yeah.
Okay.
But you'd be getting, you'd be given that the the requirements of the building code would still have to be met, like I was talking about, but you would have, you would have the right to rebuild the same setbacks and at the original.
Okay, that just wasn't clear to me.
Okay.
In the wording or not.
Other questions or comments?
I, I agree, I think that making it consistent is a good thing.
Okay, any more comments?
We've been up to now, we've been enabling, enabling people to do it, not realizing that there was, the wording was inconsistent, and that it actually precluded from the historic district doing this, and so we're trying to reestablish that and get it cleared up.
Well, I think it's the consensus of the board here then, that you, direct you to move forward on this and bring it to us as an official item for vote at our next meeting.
Good deal, thank you.
Okay, Agenda Item 3 for discussion only, consideration of the recommendation that a food truck plaza with multiple vendors be a, be specifically permitted use for some commercially zoned parcels or other ways that the city could encourage their use. And that was brought to us by one of our Commission members. Joe, fill us in on this.
Well, we were, I was asked to put this on the agenda by John, so that, I really don't think there's anything that, that includes it, but I think it's good to discuss it, and we could put it, we could have it specifically in the zoning code to where people under, it would make it clear that it, that would be a permitted use.
But they would be, go ahead.
John?
Yeah, but it would be a specifically prescribed zone, it couldn't be just, be done like willy nilly, like it would be a prescribed area where there's infrastructure, water, power, and all that.
And, and a bathroom.
Ah, yeah.
Yeah, it probably should be, it probably shouldn't be spelled out John.
Yeah. Yeah.
And that would be.
Well, I would just think.
You think it'd be appropriate in C1 zoning, or would you be up to C2, or what do you guys, you guys have any notions on those things?
Seems like it would fit in a C1 zoning.
And anything, anything beyond that then probably too, huh?
Are you thinking more of a special use, or would this be a permanent installation?
Be a permitted use for, for, for all the C designations as we're talking, you know, as it sounds right now, but what do you, what's your direction?
But you wouldn't go through a special use permit to prove it?
I don't think it would require a special use permit, but if you think that that'd be a good way to do it, that's, that's the direction we'll go.
Well, that would depend just on the frequency, if this is somebody's approaching us about this because they want to maybe set it up week in, week out, then that would be a nuisance to have to go through special use all the time. If it's every quarter or something, I think it would be a good idea to, to have them come forward and let us know what they're up to.
Especially use permits are persistent, so they don't, they don't eclipse until you sold the property, or it's been, it's been rescinded.
Okay, so they'd have to, any, anyone that wanted to do it would just have to get a, get it done for that property, and it would be permanent until it's rescinded.
I think, I think right now there is, there's, it's a permitted use on, on just about all the commercial properties.
Yeah, well, my notion on this was not that it'd be just like a one here, one there, one here, one there, but like, there'd be a specific time and date, like every Tuesday, food trucks would be at a particular location, so people would know, if I want to go get something special for lunch, like, I don't know, Hong Kong tacos or something, you know that truck is going to be there, those trucks communicate on the internet, and they tell, they tell people where they're going to be, so there are people who will travel to find those trucks, but if we have a zone, a specific locale, not just somebody's front yard, but like by city park, but.
Commercial, public property?
Why not?
Right now, there's, it's excluded from, from that specifically.
But if you.
What's the status there in front of the mining museum, there basically are two food trucks there on weekends.
Yeah, and you know, there's been a lot of conflict regarding that, I was going to bring up to you guys, that we, maybe this is something that we could look up, because even last weekend, I was out there helping with that on my days off, but the, the, they, there's generators that are, that are really obnoxious for people who have businesses alongside of those generators. And then you have people playing music, which there's, there's separate ordinances to cover the music, but then, then maybe it would be good to have a special use permit, or maybe not special use permits, but have some specific regulations for the mobile food vendors, because there's getting more and more trouble with them.
At the farmer's market, the problem with trucks is that they take up a lot of parking space, and, and there's limited access to the electrical panel that's on the side of the bathrooms, and frequently, somebody with one of those will, the circuits, because the demand is too high for what's set up there, so I don't know, they, they cause a little bit of difficulty to get at the market.
Yeah, well, I was thinking that if we establish these zones, we would have certain times, certain days, where the trucks would be encouraged to gather, then they could put the word out to their customers who will come and find them, and we can also charge them a fee for being there at that place and that time, then we could use that maybe to upgrade the infrastructure, if there's more circuitry needed at city park, if we decide to make that a, one of these food truck zones, we could use those, the income from the, from the food truck permits to upgrade the circuitry.
You know, John, I know what you're getting at, because I've seen it in other towns, where they have the food truck gathering almost every certain day of the week. I would, I'm thinking of Old Bisbee, and I don't know of any public land that's large enough to, to hold a gathering of trucks. I mean, I could think of the parking lot that where they sell parking on the other side of the convention center would be a great place, but then that's privately owned, and how can, I don't know, I have a lot of questions, I think it's a good idea to have a specific area for this, there are a lot of regulations we'd have to put in place, and a lot of questions, but I don't know where that would be if we're talking Old Bisbee.
I have a suggestion, that, that seems like one of those, one of those items that, that could be talked about for, for a number of months as an, as an agenda item, so that it can be dialed in, because a lot of times if we go off kind of half cocked on things, and then there's unintended consequences that haven't been considered, and it tends to come back and be problematic and have to be re, relooked at, that if we maybe, if you guys think it's a good idea to, to spend a number, you know, a number of meetings that we would have it as agenda item, and to be able to work on it and dial it in.
Sounds reasonable.
Well, personally, I'm a little concerned about the city initiating this, to me would be a private individual who has the property in the proper location would come to us for a special use permit or whatever, to establish this, and, and that, you know, would be initiated by private entrepreneur rather than the city anticipating this and going through it, and then may or may not have someone responding to it. Certainly, as I indicated, that the, the two trucks that are now down in front of the mining museum, I'm not quite sure how that is being done, they're obviously hooked in to power somewhere there. And.
They must have a generator.
Oh, they have a generator, okay.
Yeah, a real loud one.
And that certainly is an issue, in terms of people who live in that, that area. I know one time there was a food.
I'm sorry Doug.
I was going to say, at one time there was a food truck in the parking area below Cathal Rock, and obviously that was plugged in to somebody, a neighbor, I saw you know, electric cord running from somewhere to power that, and that certainly is an example of a place that could accommodate several trucks if that property only owner wanted to initiate it.
Yeah, maybe the, that, that seems like a wonderful place for that, if the city would cooperate with the owner, maybe put access and egress so that you could line the trucks up and have cars have a way in and out, maybe put another little bridge at the other end of that little space. That seems like it might be a fun thing to attract people, it's just a, another thing that people could find a quick and, and low priced meal quickly and easily, but it probably would take some work with the private owner and the city to, to make that into a workable site, but that's a great idea for a site, yeah.
Well. Disagree because of traffic, it's so congested there. And people, they don't always obey the rules, they pull up in their cars next to places, and leave their cars running. What about the overlook at the mine where Bisbee Blue Turquoise used to be? That seems like a big open.
Yeah. That's a great idea, because it's sort of, it's like half utilized.
Right.
Real quick, because I think we might be moving on, I'd almost go against this, because we have several or many local restaurants here that are, they're going to be struggling for a long time, I don't think we need more options for people to eat food here and encourage it, when we have folks here in town who need us to go eat at their stores and restaurants. I personally would like to see this put way off into a future agenda, when we maybe even have a flow of tourists again, so we have to even worry about this kind of thing.
Point taken.
And of course, we approved a food truck here our last meeting, and of course, they're not operating now during the pandemic, but anyway, there's an example, you know, it's on their own personal property, and of course, there's another one here in Warren likewise, on their own personal property, and, and again, I, I think that I agree with Bryant, that, that I think maybe we need to indicate that we would view this favorably if someone came before us, but I think for the city to go out and try to initiate this would be, would be awkward. And I know, I don't know that Joe is sitting around with time on his hands.
Okay. I'm busier than a glass installer in Beirut right now.
Okay. Well, I think this is something that we can keep on, on back agenda here, and, and again, convey that we would certainly favorably view someone coming before us with a special use permit, and deal with it at that time. Okay, let me turn the page here. Agenda Item 4 for discussion only, the appropriateness of potentially regulating RV storage on residentially zoned parcels, and how it could be accomplished.
Over a year ago, I had come to, come to the, come into the Commission and ask about whether or not that was something that that you thought was worthy of being moved forward, and it was, it was given affirmative vote, and so I wanted to just make some preliminary steps on that, and I'm talking with you, but I get a lot of complaints about RVs, and most of it, we don't have authority over, because it's in the right of way, a lot of it is, but there's places like up in the Historic District, that you could, I think it'd be appropriate, I think it'd be, I think I can say that it's, it's not a good place to have an RV in front of your historic building, and some people will do that, and there's a lot of people, even in Warren, again, I get a lot of complaints about RVs, and they say, well, they're parking it, well, we don't have any regulation of it. My next door neighbors, who also happen to be my parents, parked a, parked a motorhome for about, for about six years, right in front of my windows, and the sun would glare off of it and blow in my, and I did not like it very well myself, but well, they're my parents too, but, but I could see where people would not like that. And if you guys think that it's, that it's, that's something that we could look at all over town, as maybe something that's not in the front yards, there's, there's a lot of regulations that I could be cutting and pasting and sending you that other localities have, other municipalities, but I don't know whether you guys would like, would like to do it only in the historic district, not at all, or in the historic district with different rules for the rest of town, but it's something that we can, we can discuss.
Comments from Commission members?
Are we talking both parking on the street, in public areas, and on private property?
We don't have any, any authority over what you, what the right of way use of it is, then it would only be on, on private property, if the zoning code would apply.
Okay.
Well, we do have an ordinance, City Code, reference to parking. And that is certainly that if something's sitting there for an extended period of time, any vehicle that can be cited, and there certainly are cases where people are parking RVs on city right of way.
Yeah.
That's something I wish would be addressed, I, I think it's, I think it's crazy, some of the things that are allowed to, to occur like that.
Well, you can subvert that regulation by moving the vehicle one inch, and people do that, and they put there for months and just move it slightly, so the regulation doesn't solve the problem.
Yeah, but then, but then we're talking about the right of way, right, Ginger?
Yeah.
Yes, so that's outside of our.
We also have a couple of people in Old Bisbee that are parking and camping on city right of way, city parking lots.
Notify the police when you see that.
Pardon?
Notify the police department, because we do have regulations against that.
So the zoning planning board, you can't put that in the in the city code?
You don't have the authority over the city code, the city code is, is, is the, it goes under the city council, you guys have authority over the zoning code.
Okay.
So Michael, you're talking about tent camping?
Vans, motorhomes, trailers.
We have an individual who's been living in a van in one of our parking lots for three months.
Up the.
Restrooms there.
Brewery gulch. There's a number of vehicles up brewery gulch that have homeless people living in them.
And you're saying that's a police matter, Joe?
Yes, it is. I, I have no authority of my own there on the, on the right of way, and the zoning code, I, I don't believe has any, gives you, gives any authority on that either.
Does the city council have the ability to put that into the city code?
You betcha.
Well, it's already in the city code. So it's just a matter of enforcing it.
Okay.
And I guess Ginger indicated, well, that you can avoid this by moving it an inch, I don't know about that interpretation, that would be something that, but I, I know that there are people who have parked their, their RVs on a permanent basis in their, the city right of way. You know, off the street, but in the right of way.
Old Bisbee PD does not seem interested in doing anything about it. That's why I was asking if it could be put into the city code, maybe spearheaded by this committee.
You know, there's some, there's some really good rules that, that Sierra Vista has adopted regarding parking, their parking on their RVs, that includes trailer, you know, RV includes trailers and campers and all kinds of things, not just motorhomes, but they've, they've adopted some, some more stringent regulations to enable them to enforce, it's not a storage area. Our right of ways are not, are not storage areas for private individuals.
Correct.
It seems like this would have, I don't know, it seems like more appropriate to Old Bisbee, the historic area, that might be easier to enact over there. I could see something with like not in the front yards, etc., and then your lots are so small, it's almost impossible to put one anywhere else. I don't, I think if there could be a way to keep them out of front yard, maybe if they're stored, if they have space available, but you're dealing with private property, if they only have space in the front yard, I'm a little more interested also in a, in the designation between storage and people living in them. Because I do see that around Warren, that people have them plugged in and they appear to be, I'll call them guest houses, or family living in there, or whatever.
I'll send you guys what we have on that, because we've got some very specifics about, about what you're allowed to do, you're allowed to use it for 30 days every year, as your bills tell us, but, but after that, no, and it's pretty, I think 30 days is pretty hard to regulate, because you never know when people are using them or when they're not. But I'll let you, I'll give you what we have on that, because we do have some regulation in place, and there is, there has been, you know, a lot of enforcement on that in the past, and when we catch them that are doing it, they, they need to, they have to, there's, there's permits available, you cannot, you're not supposed to do it without a permit, and that's the issue really, is that if you're going to do it for 30 days out of the year, you're supposed to have a permit in place, and people who are remodeling their, their house or building, they're allowed to live in a, on a site in an RV, which I don't think is unreasonable either, but that's awkward. But that's awkward only with a only with a permit in place.
I think it's a tough one. I think we we have so many trailers and RVs on lots all around town. I wouldn't be surprised if it doesn't affect a couple hundred lots if we start talking about this. They're everywhere.
I agree. When I was on the city on the planning and zoning commission before going on to the city council, this was discussed. We spent a number of meetings discussing it. Uh and I think it's it's certainly much more involved than what it first appears. I mean, certainly there was a lot of concern about uh putting RVs basically in your carport. Uh operating them for whatever purposes or for 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 visitors or whatever. But anyway, uh it's pretty difficult to regulate that. Uh you can say a 30 day limit and so forth, but if you got to monitor that, it certainly is a challenging situation.
I agree with Bryant. I think uh backyards are fine, but I think it can get sort of like a gypsy caravan look if you see them strung out all along uh and concentrated. It's especially in the uh the Old Bisbee area, it just seems out of place. I'm wondering about uh attacking it from a health department point of view. If uh if one of these units has uh black water and gray water storage, that might be more like a residence than just a camper camper. I don't know, but uh it's uh it seems like it has a lot of aspects to it and it might be fun to have Joe look up those things from Sierra Vista and see what they've done because it sounds like they've done some thinking on it. And if you think they have some good good ideas on it, it might be a good place for us to jump off from.
Okay, and I will bring this to the planning, the design review board for the historic district because any of the regulations historic district would need to would need to begin with them and then drop down to us before it goes to council. So um if it's if it's good with you guys, I think I will bring that over to the to the design review board. That seems like a good idea.
But I like it.
Also, would you share with us what the city code now says regarding parking on public right of way on the street and public right of way? Uh and I still think that that's, you know, we need to put some teeth into that. If that's not being enforced, then it's city council needs to take a stand.
I agree.
So you can share both of those with us? Pardon?
I said, well, we'll move forward with this then.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll bring this up again and you'll be bringing us your what you've learned from Sierra Vista as well as sharing with us what the city code now states in terms of parking. And uh we'll have that for our next meeting for review.
Okay.
Okay, move on to agenda item five for discussion only. The current status and disposition um of structures on the city's list of vacant abandoned and dilapidated buildings. Or VAD, you call them.
You betcha. I'm really proud. I'm really proud of what we've been able to do and especially with the um the backing from Teresa that that's that's been a big change that we've had with city government that we've got a lot of progress here. And with the ones that the um Excel spreadsheet that I sent you guys, you'll see the ones um there's a lot of them with that NOV with intent to seize. What that is is that we've sent um notices of violation out to um a large number of, well, fairly large number of of property owners in Saginaw telling them that they've got, they had 30 days in which you get going on this or they were they were going to be um up for eminent domain would be exercised against the property. And so we've got um those properties all surveyed so far. We've we've hired surveyors to come in there and we have because it was required to make a survey and then we have to get a appraisal. And the appraisals haven't come back yet, but um they were asked for some weeks ago. And so um things are moving forward on that. So all those that have NOV with intent to seize, that's that's what's happening with that. That that is um got a lot of teeth with it. And um there's a lot.
I have questions about this list because I was approached by a woman who owns property adjacent to one of these addresses. And on the prior list, it had the owner's name and address. So we went to the address and it also is an abandoned house. And so she went to the assessor's office and the only address they have for the owner is the second abandoned property.
So we're required to use those.
What?
We're required to use those addresses from this.
But if you send mail to an abandoned house, what happens then? And evidently, in this case, the taxes are current. They've been paid. So what, how do you find the owner? And how one to one um it says it's been served?
Then if they've been, then if they, if they, we send a notice of violation, we're required by law to send it to the um address as provided by the tax assessor. So it gets sent there and if nobody signs for it and it comes back to us, it's the same as them signing for it. And so that doesn't that doesn't hinder us from moving forward, but um the monetary issues do. We can't, we can't afford, of course, to go in here and I mean, it's unbelievably expensive, far greater than I would ever guessed to 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 exercise eminent domain. But um that's what we're experimenting with right now. And the other property is um 805 Tombstone Canyon.
Yeah.
We we went back and forth with those people for years and um he was given six, they were given, he was given six months to um the the property owner is Mr. Hopless. She's listed as a property owner, but she's deceased and she's been gone for a couple of years here. I think it's in 2017 Christmas time. So she um we have to send notices to her and then we're dealing with an ex-husband who who asserts that he has ownership. But the point is that he was given six months to to get this property in order and he hasn't done it. And so therefore he is um on the 11th of this month. It um we had that he lost all of his um ability to get it taken care of because we gave him six months. It was up on the on the 11th. And so it has also been surveyed and um is getting appraised. And that's one of those those storms in the side that's been, everybody's complained about that house and the neighbors especially.
So what happens then, Joe, if it's appraised? Does the city demolish it? Does it go up for auction? What happens?
Well, if say if we're talking talking about specific, sometimes it's the city was is we keep, we're in a position where we we may demolish properties, but we really would rather sell them to people who will either will be motivated to either knock it down or they can um bring it up to bring it up to a standard. It's like the property on um A Street. It is um, let me see here. It's number 63 on the list. It's 304 A Street. That they just, they were given to one of these um notices of violation with um that we were at the end and given notice that we were intending to exercise eminent domain on the property. And that motivated them to get a demolition permit and they're tearing the house down on their own, but the house has no integrity left to it and it has no redeeming features and tearing it down would be a really benefit to the neighborhood.
I I don't see it on the list, but what's the status on that commercial building right below the Royale Theater? That I hear someone in Texas owns and is just really mad at it.
That Mr. Cook owns that. It's 88 Tombstone Canyon. Actually, that building is very nice on the inside, but he just, he's angry with the city of Bisbee, so he puts all that plywood on the windows. I've been inside and out in the deck and such, but um he puts the plywood on the windows as a way of like um effectively giving us the finger.
Okay, so nothing, nothing we can apply pressure to?
What's happening is when we were adopting the, we're re-adopting our codes and um that the codes, the by using a building code, it it doesn't have the grandfather clause in when we're using the um property maintenance code. And right now there's a clause that's semi-applicable having to do with that you can board up a building for only one year if you're doing it to preserve instead of fixing it. So he doesn't really fall into that, but we're we're going to amend the code into such a way that people can board up a building like he has done for one year and after one year you no longer have the right to do that.
Okay, anything in the historical? Anything in the historical coverage that because it's obviously not looking like uh I mean, I don't know, probably didn't look that way when it was built and used. Right? Because we have a historical district down there, don't we?
Yes, you do. I don't, I don't know of any um clause in the in the um standards for this Bisbee historic district that would necessarily apply to that, but I could be wrong.
All right.
What do people do if if they're interested in this property? How do they let the city, oh, I mean, um how would you know somebody wants to buy it?
The the best way that they they would need to use this, they can use the list and go to through the owners that are listed there and the addresses.
But that's the problem. This woman can't find the owner. And the taxes are current, which means somebody knows where he is.
Right, where have been, if the taxes are being sent to that that property and they're and they're paying them.
It could be on a forwarding, they're just having the mail forwarded.
Right.
Yeah. Well, I don't know. It seems like somebody ought to know where the owner is.
There are lawyers who can find people. They will find you.
You can run, but you can't hide.
Yeah.
So so Joe, you talked about the um cost of eminent domain. And you mentioned the cost of surveying and appraisal. What other costs go into it? If we're not talking um uh taking it over, demolishing and removing, if we're going to sell it, what are the other costs of of going into eminent domain? Are there court, a lot of court costs?
There's a lot of attorney costs, yes, and and court costs. That's I think primarily it's attorney costs. And although we have city attorneys there, these kind of things are um a cost plus basis, the way I understand it.
Other comments?
Well, I like it.
Unfortunately, this has been on my number one list for many, many, many years and it's very difficult. Uh and it's kind of beyond why someone would have a property and allow it to fall into the ground. I just don't know when there's people who will want to buy it, you know, I just, it's just, it's just very strange. Have there been some cases where you've actually acquired title to a property? I seem like on city council agendas that there's been a couple of agenda items in which it seems like you're acquiring title to to
Yeah.
to dilapidate properties?
I'm trying to find the the, these are, these all have a line at where it's um Oh, there we go. All right, I scrolled on. Okay, that is line 53. It looks like um, no, 54. That's on E Street. So that is um that the people, the family had offered it to the city several years ago. And the city um declined to take it. And so um I mentioned that to Teresa and Teresa said, well, that's an opportunity for us. And so that I believe that the city currently is the owner of that property. Actually, I can look at the county map and tell you real quick.
So my understanding was that Step Up Bisbee was cooperating and likewise habitat for humanity for actually coming in and 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 building on that site or those sites?
Yeah, we're actually just at um, see, that is 416 N Street. The city is listed as the owner of that property, so we've taken title to it. And the um the Step Up Bisbee, um we're, you know, we're involved in that house over on Fort Wachuka Lane that the city has acquired. And um Step Up Bisbee is is rehabbing it right now. They're, they'll be done before September's over. They've actually got a lot of a lot done. But they will.
Well, the property that's on this list on Youngblood Hill came in front of planning and zoning a couple of months ago with a different owner for a right of way issue. So somehow he figured out how to acquire title.
Which line is the property, which line?
I don't know, but it's 223 Youngblood Hill.
Okay, yeah, I'm very familiar with that property.
Yeah, but how did he acquire? How did he make that work?
He um he had, there were um property owners that um signed over. There's a lot of property owners, I guess, on that or heirs and such. And um they they assigned, they they signed over their ownership to Todd Conklin.
Okay.
That's the way I understood it.
I agree with Doug that blighted housing just poisons everything. It's like a rotten apple in the barrel. And anything we can do to move forward vigorously on that is it certainly is going to help everybody who owns a house in this town. And some of that stuff is just, you just shake your head saying, what's going on here? Does it need, does it take, does it take uh city council action to come up with some more laws with more teeth? To give us a chance to move forward more vigorously? I don't know.
I think it's, I think it's a matter of money mostly, John, because like I said, it costs a lot of money and the city hasn't hasn't always been so flush with money like ever. But they um so it it's something that they haven't, they haven't put a lot of a lot of um priority to. It's like there's a house over at 616 Santa Cruz that um we're looking at trying to be able to acquire. And um if you guys go by that and take a look at it, it's like, you can imagine the poor neighbors that live next door to them and what they say about us for for allowing that to happen. It's 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 a it's an injustice.
Are most of these vacant or do people actually reside in them?
Vacant for the most part. There's one of them that says, it says on there that it's it's inhabited. The house over, I think it's on um I'm trying to think what that Blackbird or Black?
I've heard of uh health departments going in and declaring that a place is essentially uninhabitable for healthcare reasons. So I mean, if there doesn't have running water, um leaky waters coming in through the roof.
I do that all the time. I get two houses this week.
Yeah.
So it's, it's not something that's that's unheard. We have the authority to do that, but houses that aren't occupied, it it serves no purpose for the most part.
So so when we acquire these properties, um are we required to sell them at auction or can we list them with a Realtor?
I believe that there will be auctioned, but um I'm probably not the person to ask you about that. But yeah, Jen, I know that the um
Please go to public auction. You, you, it's an open sale. Anyone could show up and buy them if it gets to that point.
The deal that's going on right now is with the city and they're acquiring the properties, that anybody that is a city employee is going to be able to um purchase them is what we were told lately. So they've, there's something different going on there and I'm not certain what it is because this is something that the city council's been working on. I haven't been um up on that.
Sorry, I thought you were still talking about eminent.
Joe, this is Lou. Joe? Lou Pollock. Um, the city's, the city's working on those properties in conjunction with Step Up Bisbee and who was mentioned before about Habitat for Humanity. They're not in on this yet. But I believe it's the city manager's project to get as many of these properties as possible, as long as the cost is reasonable and have them rehabilitated so they can be sold to firefighters, policemen, sanitation workers, teachers. The people that we need here in Bisbee that can't find places to live and so they live in Sierra Vista or wherever. And we'd like to bring those people back here to the community and give them affordable housing that they can purchase. And that's what she's working on and that's what some of those properties are headed toward.
Yeah. Thank you, Louis, because I, you and I have had various conversations on this and I appreciate the fact that, you know, you are the person on the council who's keeping this moving forward. So thank you.
Yeah. Thank you.
And can the money that's, that the city gets from selling these properties be used then to continue the eminent domain process? I mean, can that go back into the same process to acquire more properties?
That's my understanding, Cindy.
Yeah. Okay.
I have to plead ignorance. I didn't get that list. How many properties are on the list?
There is currently sixty-nine properties, it looks like.
Yeah, that's a lot of housing stock just sitting there, not doing anything.
Yeah, they, they, these places can be turned into structures that are brought up to a standard that we'd have families living in them. That they would be, they would be an asset to the city and the neighborhoods instead of a detriment like they are now. And it'd be good for all of us. It's actually an investment the city's making in doing this.
I was going to say, I'm also very pleased that Step Up Bisbee is becoming more active on this. And certainly they can receive our donations, which become tax credits on our Arizona income tax, which is, can be a tremendous source of, significant source of funds for them in terms of doing the reconstruction and so forth. It seemed like we, the big problem now is legal in terms of how do we cost, legal cost of condemning properties and acquiring them. Anything further? This is going to be continuing on our agenda, Joe. I think that makes this an agenda item on basically all of our, to give us an update that this is something we all feel very strongly about.
Yeah, this is something that is changing monthly, so you'll, you'll be able to learn something every month.
Okay. Move on now. The commissioner comments, any, on any subject? Strictly in terms of future agenda items?
Well, this isn't an agenda item, but I think it's wonderful that the city has been paving the streets during this pandemic time. I live in Warren now and lots of the streets have been repaired. It's wonderful.
Well, certainly that's going to come up.
For those of you who don't know, Doug, this is Lou Pollock.
Yes.
For those of you who may not know, Tombstone Canyon has just been approved for the repave. K G and E got the contract and in the next few months, from one end of Tombstone Canyon to the other, that's going to all be repaved, so.
Hey. Can we put a couple of speed humps coming off of eighty?
Yeah.
Well, certainly the sales tax that was initiated to pay for that, I think it's in a year, is it? Louis, is it going to be on the ballot for renewing that this, this November?
Well, it doesn't expire until August of two thousand twenty-three. And I'm not sure if it's on this, this election's ballot or not. I know that they're talking about putting the one cent sales tax up to the voters this November, but it's not associated with paving. It's not, it's not part of part of the HERF or the funding for the paving of the streets. That comes up again in two thousand and three. That's when it expires. And there is talk about renewing it or asking the citizens to vote to renew it. Yes.
Well, I certainly was very instrumental in getting that on the ballot originally and, and that's certainly been one of the big success stories of, of the city, the, the paving that we've done. And again, it's citizens, we're doing this strictly through that one percent sales tax. So I, I likewise am very, very pleased with what has happened there. Well, the fact that we have bought our, we bought our own equipment and so we're, we're putting down in many cases our own paving, which is a fraction of the cost of hiring someone else to do it. Now, in the case of Tombstone Canyon, we were going out for contract, but many of the other smaller streets, the city's been doing it themselves, which reduced the cost. Any other comments or suggestions for future agenda items?
I had one and I don't know if it falls in this committee or not. But especially in Old Bisbee, it seems like we're having a little battle between the two of our local contractors to see how many banners or how large the banners they can put on their construction projects. Or does that fall under this committee or is that somebody else?
It falls under the, it falls under jurisdiction of this committee.
Okay. Is there any rules regulations about that right now?
There is a, the registrar of contractors requires a contractor to, to to put signage out on their job sites. I think it may be appropriate for, for you guys to decide how big those, that there's a limit on the size of those signs. If that, if that's something you want to do, that is your prerogative. Yes.
I will look into it for next, next month's meeting.
Would you like that on the meeting, Mike?
Please.
Okay.
Good idea.
Any other comment suggestions? Are we ready to adjourn? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So.
Second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you all. And thank you, Joe.
Thank you, Joe.
Um, I was busy writing down about the construction signs. Um, who proposed that?
Mike.
Hi.
And who seconded it?
John.
John, okay. Thank you so much.
And you're going to also bring back the city attorney for, to meet with us at some point?
I would love, I would love to get that done.
Okay. Tell him that we want him.
Yeah, I sent him, I sent him emails on it. I'm not sure what my emails go into, you know, wind up in the trash basket or what, you know, I mean, you know, the trash file or something going on that he's not answering. We'll give it a whirl next time.
Okay. Give him a call, personal call.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you all.
Thank you. Thanks, Joe.
Thank you.
Bye.